Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. We are here tonight for a supplemental hearing in support of the statutory process for approval of the McEnroe petition, which was previously filed by the authority, the NJDEP and the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. The supplemental hearing is necessitated by changes which DEP has suggested to the transaction and which we have made and which we have memorialized in the form of an amended petition, which was filed with the department on July 29, 2011. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to take questions and comments from members of the public or interested parties to forward the transcript of those comments, those questions, and the answers which we will provide tonight to the department and to the DCA for final McEnroe approval, which will, subsequent to the conditional approval, which they've indicated preliminarily. I should also note that the local finance board of the Department of Community Affairs has approved the proposed financing for us to go ahead and do the transaction as amended by the supplemental petition and as amended by this proceeding. The proceeding will focus on comments and questions from the public, recognizing that the transaction and the hearing that was held previously is, for the most part, identical in terms of benefits to the municipalities, in terms of rate reduction and all of the additional benefits that were previously shared with our participating municipalities, except that the term of the contract with Covanta, the amended agreement and lease with Covanta, will end in December of 2031, in a much shorter term. In addition to that, the $12 reduction in tip fees for contracting municipalities will be guaranteed by the authority through the end of the 2031 term. The seven towns that don't contract with the authority, as a result of suggestions from the DEP, will also receive a $3 per ton grant from the authority to the municipality themselves for purposes of tax relief. The remainder of the transaction, changes which are part of our amended petition are set forth in that petition, which has been made available by notice to the public. And we now stand, I think, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you, so that we can take comments and questions from the public.
At this time, this meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting pursuant to the rules of the McEnroe hearing. Questions will be answered after all questions are asked. Conly state your main town of residence for the record. It's time, who has any comments or questions?
Rich, then, Council, Summit?
Mike.
So can you spill your name, comments?
Thank you for inviting us to this meeting. As you know, Jonathan, Summit had raised some questions in our several meetings with you, which I hope you have the answers to now, but we're concerned about the longevity of the original contract because most of us in this room would not be around when it expired, and that sort of concerned a lot of us, senior citizens anyway. And one of the other factors was that in Summit, we're fiercely proud of our AAA bond rating, which we try to maintain and pursue as aggressively as we can to maintain just a strong semblance of financial austerity within the city. And we're concerned about some of the financial provisions of the contract going out further whereby we had questions as to whether there would be a liability on the taxpayers of the county if Covanta, for some reason, wasn't able to meet their obligations down the line. So those two basic areas, I think, were the initial reason for our rejection, and we hope that you can address these answers tonight.
Thank you, Rich. Anyone else?
Paul Cascades, I actually wear two hats here tonight. One is chairman of SWAC and also a staff member for the City of Summit. My question is, does all of the current 14 contracted communities have to execute this agreement for this financial model to be approved?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. It's Tom Getson-Danner from the City of Summit on the Common Council side. I'm glad that the major changes are considered here. The extent of the maturity shortening is important, of course. I've got a couple of other ones. I'm wondering if we thought at the same time of perhaps correcting some omissions with Covanta's operating contract. I'm thinking about the revenue sharing obligations that I think are already in the contract for sharing the non-ferrous scrap metal salvage value with the 14 membership towns and not just giving it all to Covanta. Secondly, I'm wondering if the hosting fees for Raway could be paid by the license holder himself of Covanta and not the UCUA. And thirdly, I wonder if the fact that we could, the desirability of having one tipping fee for all users rather than having a disadvantaged rate for the original founders. I believe the rationale for that comes from the fact that the original bonds were issued at disadvantageous rates, and as long as they were outstanding, it necessitated a higher tipping fee for the members. But now that this transaction would refinance all the old bonds outstanding, seems to me the way is clear for perhaps a unitary rate for all tippers in-state as well as out-of-state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Director Coolish, or Chairman Coolish, Director Sullivan, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Bruce Patterson, 325 Willow Avenue. Just last week, I put together a letter which I sent over to the UCUA, so I would assume you all have a copy of that as you review it. It's not, I know Director Sullivan did and also Jonathan Williams at Dakotas does. Well, I also am sending that to the other member towns. I'm from Garwood. I'm a resident and I'm on the planning board. I'm not on the council, but I did send it to the other towns for their review, but this letter might have been described as mean-spirited, but however, we got to this point where I really had to analyze this, and we had major problems, and hopefully everybody read this letter or at least the important people have read this letter. So in there is also is questions that I would like to ask and hopefully get clarifications on. But preceding this, let me just follow up on another gentleman's question that said, does all 14 towns have to be, have to sign the agreement? And knowing what the answer is, but just assuming that the answer is no, not necessarily, what happens to the other towns that don't sign it, especially presently after the contract is enforced and also come 2023, when the original contract expires, which I assume those towns that don't sign the new contract would be under the auspices of the existing contract? That's a question. But then, but just getting into my, into my letter that I sent, then hopefully I do get proper answers. One is, I've been following this, obviously, when it arose back in early last year, and I went to the freeholder meeting where the presentation was put forth, and I appreciate the openness that you sent me a 100-page manual, which I read through it, and hopefully all the commissioners read through it also, because in this letter, I actually do reference a couple of items. But of the main concern, in talking to various towns, it appeared that Dakotas was rushing the signing of this previous contract and telling them that it was specifically for great rate savings and tax savings. However, in that 100-page manual, it did mention that Dakotas was down in front of the Trenton authorities, and they were talking about where Covanta is not financially viable. So somehow we are getting, we're not getting the full truth of why we should be signing this contract. So one thing is, I would like to know what exactly is the reason why Covanta is not financially viable? That's the question. Just moving down, I guess. I had Oprah the latest bond amortization table, and it really came as a shock to me because normally, when you have a bond that's out to 2045 and then all of a sudden it shrinks down to 2031, normally there would be higher payments involved. However, what I saw on the amortization tables of the bond, that actually there would be not only lower savings presently, but then later on, we're talking about a balloon-type savings, and I don't know if anybody really looked at it, but it really raised my eyebrows in that. And I sent this as an example, that we're looking at balloon payments of $19 million moving up to $25 million, up to $40 million as the last year of 2031 bond. This creates a major problem as to who's going to be paying all this money, this extra money? I mean, sure, we're getting a little bit of savings upfront, but who's going to be paying this, this money later on? The $19 million, the $25 million, the $40 million extra in these balloon payments? That's question two in my letter. Also, another part of question two, in about two years, the savings that we're looking at right now from the original contract that expires in 2023 to the present-day refinancing plan that hasn't been approved yet, but you know, we're looking at like $8.8 million savings. And in two years, actually, it drops down to about a $6.1 million savings. So my question is, so all of a sudden now, we're not saving $2.7 million, so who's making up for that shortfall? In addition, 2024, which is 12 years from now, suddenly the savings of $8 million, which shrunk down to $6 million, is now a loss of approximately $8 million. So there's a swing of about $13.6 million in 2024. Who's going to make up for that shortfall? And then, of course, the losses, which I mentioned previously, about $19 million, $25 million, and $40 million from this new amortization, who's making up for those shortfalls? Moving along, I have a question three. And talking about, you know, now that we're refinancing and we're going to get this $8.8 million refinanced savings from the initial original contract that expires in 2023, this $8.8 million, the question is, where is this extra savings going to go? I read the 100-page manual and I saw, and in my attachment one, I actually did break down how I tracked it, and it looks like the UCUA will get $4 million. Of that $4 million, they're turning around and giving the tipping fee decrease to the 14-member towns. So of that $4 million, approximately $2.2 million goes to the member towns, which leaves $1.8 million still going to the UCUA. Another, and that was mentioned in Dakotas' July letter to the towns, another is $2 million goes to Union County Government. The City of Raway gets an increase in their host fee of $150,000. The seven non-contractual member towns who deliver their waste by way of private haulers actually will be getting $3 a tonne, as Mr. Williams, Dakotas, mentioned, and that, and that accounts for about $600,000. And then there's miscellaneous waste flow programs, which is going to be about a quarter million dollars. But I track down the savings, $8.8 million, like I mentioned, and I can track down where $7 million is going to be going. So that leaves $1.8 million. My guess is either it's going back to Covanta as maybe a profit, or maybe there's upfront bond transaction costs, that could be. But my problem here with this is, I'll just run down. I identified $1.8 million going to the UCUA. I saw nothing in the documents that really dictate why that $1.8 million should go to the UCUA. In my opinion, I feel that $1.8 million should be distributed to the member towns and decreasing the tipping fee even further. There was another $2 million that went to Union County Government. I see no reason in the documents as to why $2 million is going to the Union County Government. If anything, that should go, again, to the member towns. The City of Raway has an increase in their hosting fee from $850,000 to $1 million. That $150,000 difference, I see no reason why they deserve it because they were going to get $850,000 all the way up to 2023, so I can't see why that should, why should that not remain in effect? And $150,000, again, goes back to the member towns. I mean, if we're talking compromises here, I mean, you know, okay, so Raway gets another $150,000, you know, I'd let that slide. And then, of course, the $1.8 million difference that I tracked, that actually was untraceable, and I would like an explanation of that. Another question I had in my letter, in the July 29, 2011 letter from Dakotas to the member towns, he talks about some kind of a $12 million fund being, is a $12 million bond also being floated? Let me find it in the letter. And I'll just read the sentence, "As a part of the bond financing, UCUA will borrow $12 million and deposit the funds in a cost-reduction account," which I have no idea what that means. That would be a good question. "With the bond trustee and all such funds and the interest earned thereon will be dedicated only to the costs related to the facility, which Covanta may draw upon during the first four years of the lease. Covanta intends to utilize the funds to reduce project costs and thus increase early-year profitability." This, to me, makes no sense. These funds are an essential benefit to Covanta and are being offered in consideration for Covanta's reallocation to UCUA of certain economic benefits. I could see there was some, there was some kind of negotiation for that, but the question is, well, what exactly is this $12 million for that you negotiated? Obviously, Covanta puts something on the table, but nothing is spelled out here. So my question is, just what is that $12 million, and I don't think it really should be barred unless you can justify what that is? Other question, well, actually, you know, being that, I have concerns with the new, the new appointed director. However, I felt his background wasn't solid like Sunil Garg's was, but you know, I'll let that slide because I understand he is an interim director, but hopefully he will apply himself fully into this project, recognize the public's concerns, listen carefully to the questions that we're asking and the answers that we're going to get. Just in summing up, I mean, my main concern is the, this balloon payment at the end. I mean, something is not set up right. I have no idea who sat down and said, well, since we have to shorten the life of the bond, and yes, we want to give the carrot to the member towns, we're going to make this huge balloon payment due approximately five years prior to the end. So all of a sudden, there's going to be a lot of debt coming up, and that's my primary concern is, I don't see how somebody could have sat down and set this amortization table up and looking at that, knowing full well that the member towns would be squeezed, and I calculated some tonnages that was in my letter. And I'm looking at, and these are in $2011, I mean, we're talking about escalation costs also. Just this year, I could see it's like, it's about 4.1% according to your formula, but I cannot see, the member towns are, have this full exposure of tens and tens of millions of dollars down the road. I mean, can we, is the bond going to be callable possibly, where, you know, we can renegotiate it? However, once it gets renegotiated, then, of course, you're kicking the can down the road again. So that's, that's a lot of my questions. Hopefully, you wrote them all down, and I'm going to hear some clarifications. I appreciate listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Berry, and I live in Kenilworth. Last time we did this, the questions were asked and immediately answered, so I thought we were going to do that again. I have quick questions, but if we're not, then this works too, as long as I can come back if they weren't answered and just try them again. They're real quick, and there are like a dozen of them. So if you want to take them down, I'll talk slowly. Anyone here representing Covanta? I mean officially? All right, that's the first. Are these meetings catered? I mean, I was just curious on that one. What is the gate price? That is, if you have a hauler coming in from New York and wants to dump off a couple tonne, whatever it is, how much do you charge, like today, if he were to come today or tomorrow? I checked with Kenilworth, and they're paying $68.05 per tonne plus $1.67 mitigation amount. What is that, a mitigation amount? And is that what every town pays that signed the agreement in 2011? Is that their amount? And what does Summit, does Summit pay $12 more, or what's the situation there? You know, because $68.05 just kind of popped up, and $1.67 just kind of popped up. So I couldn't reconcile that to any papers that I had on this deal. Okay, moving right along. Guaranteed tonnage. In the agreement with Kenilworth, Kenilworth is doing around 2,600 tonnes now. It's been coming down from 2,900 to 26. In the agreement they signed back in December, it guaranteed, the guaranteed tonnage amount was 3,000, which is more like a 2004 number, something we'll probably never achieve. Now, I understand that UCUA hasn't been enforcing this guaranteed tonnage. Will they be enforcing it, or can you guarantee, can you guarantee that they won't enforce the guaranteed tonnage? Okay, the UCUA obligation had been, I guess it was 250,000 tonnes, 260, something like that, under the prior agreement. This new agreement raises it to 430,000 tonnes, and 330 of that is supposed to come from the, you know, the 14 towns that signed up, plus the other counties, the county councils are up to 330. And then in the, in the documents, it has this 100,000 from out-of-county. How do you work that? I mean, is there a certain minimum you're going to, what is an out-of-county? What is going to be credited to the UCUA as compared to some guy from New York City dumping it off? Is that going to, is UCUA going to have to have a marketing department and sign up all this garbage that's coming in? I mean, how could that possibly work? Or do you have 100,000 lined up somewhere already? To clarify the debt, and it's just broad numbers. As of 12/31/10, I saw a number of 226, 230, somewhere around there, is the debt with no changes. What is the debt now, or will it be after these things, bonds get floated? I saw it's 260, but I just wanted to confirm the number. Okay, the Raway host fee. I saw in the papers, it was 2.2 million, 2.199 something, where 850 is being paid by Covanta and the rest is being paid by the UCUA. I just want that confirmed. And who will pay it afterwards? I mean, is it going to be that same arrangement, except Covanta pays a million, then the UCUA pays the, whatever it is, one point, what was the difference under this new agreement? And what's to become of the host fee payment for tonnage over 446,760, which I, which came out to be, to date, something like 5.3 million that apparently Raway is not getting because they haven't asked for it or it hasn't been paid to them? What does this new agreement do with that, or are you going to continue to ignore Raway's excess tonnage amount? Okay, moving right along. Now, as far as the reported savings, last agreement was 276 million. This agreement, I've seen 70 million as the savings from this. But what will be the lost revenue? That is, these bonds, if nothing changed, would be paid off 2023. UCUA would take over the facility, they would get 100% of the electricity sales and recyclables. What is the value of that, 2024 to 2031? What is the value of those eight years that you're pretty much giving away? No electricity sales, no recyclables. And, you know, in this situation, I kind of insist, I insist on a number. Surely, you must have figured this out. I mean, it would be malpractice not to consider this amount. So that number, I'm sure, exists somewhere. And, oh, I forgot the last one. Finishing up, how much has in fees been paid so far to the law firm of Dakotas and NW Financial? Thank you. And, you know, these are quick questions. If they aren't answered, I'd like to come back up and clarify or whatever. And, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This time, I'll close the question part of the public hearing and go to the answering part of the meeting. Who wants to step off first? Jonathan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try and be as methodical as I can, so it's going to take a while, and as we get to different questions, I may ask for assistance from other members of the project team. With respect to questions from the City of Summit, yes, Summit did previously object to the length of the term, and as has been previously mentioned, working with DEP, the term has been shortened to 2031, December of that year. And we have been able to preserve most, if not all, of the benefit in the transaction for the years which lead up to 2031. Everyone needs to remember a couple of things. One is, there are no member towns. This is a county authority. It's not the same as a local authority where towns are members and have exposure by virtue of participation in the structure of the authority. Here, the towns have no exposure, other than what they agree to in a contract with this utilities authority. That contract, which will dictate exactly what the towns receive, what benefits they receive, what risk they take, and how it will work going forward. Right now, the utilities authority, because of what happened in 1998, received no benefit from Covanta, other than Covanta leasing the facility, taking the risk or filling the facility, and making all of the debt service payments on the facility debt at a time when Covanta was going bankrupt. That is certainly not the circumstance now, which I'll clarify in a moment. With respect to the risk to the towns, as I've said, other than the delivery of waste, there's no risk to the towns in the debt or any other portion of the contract, other than to deliver to the waste stream, which they have agreed to, which they're already delivering pursuant to the contract which is in place through 2023. And in addition, in exchange for the benefits which we're offering in this transaction, they will have to continue to deliver that quantity of waste to this facility through 2031. Do all the towns have to agree? Do all the towns have to agree? The answer is no. The contract with Covanta, as amended and as reviewed by The Economist and all the people at DEP, provides for a minimum of 100,000 tons of contract waste to be committed prior to the closing on the transaction. Thirteen of the 14 towns previously agreed to the 40-year transaction. We're hoping to have all 14 this time because the benefits, which I think all of the towns recognize, including Summit, recognized at the time, the lengthy, long transaction that was previously proposed, no longer is the case and will be down to 2031. So the benefits from Covanta, in terms of Covanta's making additional host fee payments, making non-ferrous metal payments, sharing energy revenue, all of those are dealt with by the amendment to the contract and to the lease with Covanta. With respect to non-ferrous metals, we've reviewed the revenue stream for non-ferrous metals, which Covanta has been receiving, and we have negotiated for and received in the contract, an annual fee for non-ferrous metals. Covanta has agreed to increase their host fee payment from, contribution to the host fee payment, from 850,000 to $1 million. And Covanta will be paying that $1 million host fee payment going forward. The UCUA does pay the remainder of the host fee pursuant to the existing agreement, which stays in place now until 2023, which will stay in place until 2031. And the UCUA has been collecting sufficient revenue in its tip fees to make those payments. The amount of tip fee revenue is not going to go up, it's going to go down, as we've previously discussed. There was a suggestion that there be one tip fee for all generators of waste delivered to the facility. And while in a perfect world, that would be a great suggestion, and we've discussed it at length with everyone at DEP, including Commissioner Martin and his staff, there is, there are a couple of things to be considered. One is the 14 towns are signing on for delivery of minimum portions of the waste stream. The other seven towns don't control their waste stream. They don't provide for collection, they don't provide for delivery to this facility, and they certainly don't, on behalf of their residents or businesses, guarantee any quantity of waste into the facility. And therefore, those municipalities take no risk in terms of delivery. They, both the waste generators in those communities do contribute towards retirement of debt by dealing directly with private haulers who bring waste to the facility under regulatory flow control. And the additional $3 per ton, which, when you add up the waste stream from those seven communities, comes to about $100,000 per year, not the number that was quoted earlier in the article. That money will come from the authority in the form of grants, which will be used by the municipality for direct tax relief to the, to residents and businesses in those I think we've already discussed the fact that there's no risk to the, Mr. Patterson said that in his letter to the UCUA, he raised a question about, you know, the risk to the member town. So I'd like to emphasize again, there is no risk of these debt payments, there is no risk of any kind to the towns who sign contracts with the authority, other than what is in those contracts. And those contracts simply require delivery of waste to the facility until the end of the term. There are no member municipalities who are sharing the risk. The risk, which we'll discuss in a moment, is borne by the authority, by the County of Union, in terms of deficiency agreements for delivery of waste. And the analysis, which was initially done by Stephen Gabel, which has now been done by the NJDEP and the economists that they hired to review this transaction, indicates that the risks associated with the transaction, which are the risks of the counties, are far outweighed by the benefits, which will be received over the term of the agreement. With respect to what happens to the towns that don't sign? I believe Mr. Patterson asked that question. Let me answer it again. Do all 14 towns have to sign before we can close? The answer is no. We need only sign 100,000 tons of waste out of the 330,000 tons of Union County waste, which, which we're contemplating. And to the towns that don't sign, if it's a town that already has a contract with the authority, their contract will of course be honored at the current price through 2023. Once those contracts come to an end, regulatory flow control, which has been recently endorsed by the United States Supreme Court, will direct waste to this facility at whatever rate is in effect at the time for non-contract waste. Mr. Patterson, in his comments, referred to a manual which was sent. I think what he's referring to is to the petition, the letter petition, which was filed with the NJDEP and the Department of Local Government, the Division of Local Government Services, on January 25th of 2011, as supplemented by an amended petition filed July 29th, 2011. We didn't rush anybody to sign anything. We simply went out and offered these benefits to the 14 towns when we first filed the petition. I believe that we made an effort to answer questions from the towns who had them, spent, you know, many evenings out, meeting with members of council and different elected officials in those municipalities. And as previously indicated, 13 of the 14 towns approved the amended petition. The new petition, which is for a shorter term, it has the same annual benefits and reduction in tip fees, we're hoping to achieve as, as good or better a rate of participation as we had gotten for the previous petition. Now, let's clear up something that has been raised by mistake. I'm sure Mr. Patterson made it in good faith, but it's, it's warrants of being addressed at this time and warrants correction. Mr. Patterson, in his comments and in his letter, which he has sent to the authority and to the different municipalities, indicated that the petition, which was written on our letterhead, referred to Covanta's financial distress. He quite correctly then raised questions about the petition. If Covanta is in financial distress, then what is this thing really all about? Unfortunately, he didn't read the letter correctly, the letter petition, because the portion of the letter petition that he refers to is going over the history of the contractual relationship with Covanta and the circumstances that we found ourselves in in 1998. The section of the letter that he quotes, when he writes to the towns, objecting to this petition, objecting to this transaction, is directly taken from a section which starts on page two, called "History of the Contractual Relationship with Covanta." And the phrase that he quotes about the financial distress of Covanta is from that historical recitation, which was presented to the departments by way of background. Covanta is certainly making a lot of money now. That's why we're able to do this. There were unanticipated energy revenues. They've done well as a company after having gone through a bankruptcy, which did result from the financial distress that we identified back in 98. But they're doing well now. And it's why we were able, not only to negotiate the original benefits from them, which we don't have now. We don't have $12 per ton for all the towns to reduce tip fees. We don't have any energy revenue ever throughout the transaction. We're able to achieve additional host fees for the town which is the host of all the truck traffic that comes through this facility. So yes, they're, they're doing fine now and they're able to share and give back part of that revenue stream so that we can in turn, take $4 million a year. These are the accurate numbers, for anyone who's listening. $4 million per year, of which 1.5 million will go to the participating municipalities. And when coupled with the rate reduction, which they also negotiated, which no one ever mentions, the 1.5 plus the rate reduction will bring us $12 per ton cheaper for the towns that are willing to sign up through 2031 and which are willing to commit to delivery of their waste stream through that term. The remaining money of about $100,000 a year will go to the seven towns by way of grants, which is direct tax relief off the municipal budgets in those towns, and which will be enjoyed by the residents and businesses in those towns directly off their tax bills. The remaining $2 million will go to, the next $2 million of the four, will go to the County of Union. Again, for direct application of tax relief for those of us who live in the county, who operate businesses in the county, and who pay a county portion of their tax bill, the county tax bill will reflect that payment and that reduction of $2 million, which is a significant form of tax relief. That leaves, I think, $400,000 is needed by the authority because of the declining availability of funds from an earlier settlement with Bergen County. Which leads us to the question about the 100,000 tons. There is currently an agreement to deliver 255,000 tons of waste to Covanta. And the amount of waste being delivered to Covanta under that agreement, plus regulatory flow control, the amount of waste generated in the county, has historically been and will continue to be a minimum of 330,000 tons. That's what we've committed to Covanta in this transaction going forward. The extra 100,000 tons, which takes you to 430, must come from out of county. And yes, the authority will sign up a public entity generator from surrounding county or municipalities. The, one of the changes that the DEP made in the transaction, actually they made two with respect to 100,000 tons. 100,000 tons may not come from out of state. That's the insistence of Commissioner Martin. And we had originally negotiated to market those 100,000 tons at a price higher than what we're paying Covanta. And the original petition called for any differential to be divided evenly with Covanta. The department has indicated that because the UCUA is taking the risk of those 100,000 tons, they should enjoy all of the benefit of any differential. And the change in the contract reflects that Covanta will no longer share in that differential, that it will all, inure to the benefit of the Utilities Authority and will be used to keep the system operating. Bond amortization. Again, now this was stated at the Freeholder Meeting where I spoke on this transaction a couple of weeks back in August. It was discussed at length by me in response to questions about where is the money going to come from for those balloon payments? The question was answered that night. It'll be answered again tonight. And those who didn't listen or who didn't understand where that money's going to come from, those who then chose to write letters to the towns, to this authority, and would stand here tonight and say that that's a huge problem, simply don't pay attention. Contract and the petition that's been filed reflect revenue sharing with Covanta, cotermines with the years in which those debt service payments are to be made. And the revenue sharing projections far outweigh the cost of those debt service payments. Covanta makes the debt service payments, as they do now, as they will through 2023, out of the tip fee that they're paid for processing of the waste. At the end of that time, the revenue sharing formula kicks in and the Utilities Authority and the county will have more than sufficient revenue to make those payments. The key factor though, is, again, if we're listening, is that the risk of that is on the county. It's the county that has already adopted a limited deficiency agreement, which says the waste will be delivered and the debt service payments will be made. That risk is not passed through to the towns. It doesn't go to the towns. And at the time all that's occurring, this facility will be worth, you know, at an appraised value then of several hundred million dollars, with only a small portion of the debt remaining at that time. So yes, the person who came up with that amortization schedule did think about where the money would come from for those payments. Doesn't come from the towns, doesn't come from the ratepayers. It comes from Covanta, having received the money for processing of waste, backed up by the county limited deficiency agreement. $12 million bond for cash flow at the beginning of the transaction. That debt is repaid by Covanta. No additional fees, still at the reduced rate that we've negotiated. Talking about the balloon payment. When this facility and this authority was about to go bankrupt in 1998, there were a group of citizens who got involved in solid waste disposal. Some of them were elected officials. One of them was Dan Sullivan. And almost single-handedly prevented the disaster that could have occurred from happening. Dan Sullivan has more background in solid waste than most of the other people in this room. The Kenilworth, Mr. Berry, the, the questions that you asked, I'm going to assume that you weren't serious about the question on catering. The gate price being charged today of $68 and change. Kenilworth does pay an additional, I think it's a dollar per ton, but it's been called a mitigation amount. That's as a result of Kenilworth having failed to sign on back when this transaction was put together in 98. They missed a couple of years and they later, we like to believe respectfully to everyone involved, saw the error of their ways and, and joined up. And the litigation was, in order to make it more fair to the towns who did sign on from the beginning. So Kenilworth does pay an extra dollar per ton. Summit does not pay that. Summit pays the contract price that it entered into in 98 and, which by the way, the price that's being charged now has been and continues to be among the lowest solid waste disposal rates in the state. And no one that I've ever spoken to, any objection to the way that it's turned out in 98. Those participating municipalities have saved a lot of money. The people who generate waste in the towns that couldn't sign up or wouldn't sign up are paying in the high $90 per ton at the same time that Summit and the other participating towns are paying 68. I've explained the, the tonnage figures about how you get to 430,000. The contract with Covanta, it is 255. There's a separate regulatory flow control contract, which takes that figure up to 330, which is the amount of waste generated in the County of Union. And that an extra 100,000 tons is viewed as an opportunity for the authority to generate additional revenue. It will not come from out of state. Dennis, did you want to comment on the, the number of millions of debt?
The amount of new bonds being issued are approximately 140 million in interest revenue bonds and 70 million in solid waste system bonds, a total of 210 million. revenue bonds and $70 million in solid waste system bonds, a total of $210 million. The landfill bonds remain outstanding, I don't know what the current balance of them
My law partner, Kevin Condon, reminded me of a question which I did not address, having to do with will we enforce the minimum tonnage figures against the towns? We never have. Some of the towns, on occasion, delivered far more waste than is permitted by their contracts, and we were able to offset that penalty by the towns that delivered under, as best we could, but there were some municipalities who have in the past had to pay for going over their tonnage figure. We have never charged a municipality for going under. It's not to say that we wouldn't. A minimum tonnage guarantee is just that, it's the town agreeing to take this reduction in rates, to get it retroactive to January 1 of 2011, which nobody asked tonight, but that's what is provided for in the current petition and the agreement with Covanta. When we close this transaction, all the towns that have been paying the higher rates will either take a check for the difference times the amount of tonnage that they've delivered to date, or a credit against future deliveries. And it's a significant amount of money for every municipality that signs up. There is clearly the right on the part of the authority to charge member towns that don't meet their minimum tonnage with a penalty for having failed to do so. It's in the contract, it's never been enforced. Our experts, our economists, everyone who reviewed it, indicate that although it's a risk associated with this transaction, it's outweighed by those reductions and the tax savings that I keep at root. I don't know the answer to the question about my law firm's legal fees and Mr. Enright's fees for the services rendered. Those are answers that can certainly be provided, they are public information, we're happy to share them. I'm very pleased with the amount of work that we've been able to do, particularly when the term of the contract was shortened, and yet we're able to preserve all of these benefits that were so difficult to obtain through very, very hard-nosed negotiations with the company that runs this facility at present. So I'm not ashamed of the legal fees that we've charged, and those numbers will be available. As you will recall, there's a 15-day... Comment period for additional questions. We will answer those questions that we did, as we did the last time. Any remaining questions after tonight can be submitted to the authority and to us, and we will provide written answers to you, so that no one is left wondering what this is all about. Kevin, did I leave any questions unanswered for tonight? No, that's fair. There was a calculation about, I prefer not to call it lost value, Mr. Berry, but you can call it whatever you want. Certainly, I keep talking about the benefits, the reduction in fees, the fact that the debt service, all the things that I believe makes this transaction work. But you are right, the transaction does currently end in 2023. And there is a value associated with having it end then, no more debt service, no more costs associated with some of these other obligations that the authority is taking on by extending. And it is, it's like when the homeowner refinances their home, there is definitely an additional cost involved in stretching your debt out for a longer period of time. And yes, those calculations have been made, we can certainly provide them to you, but you need to forget, you need to remember, I'm sorry, that in 2023, when the facility would be returned to us, it would be a facility that has to be maintained and operated during the period of time, 2023 through 2031. So when you're making those calculations about lost revenue or additional costs that no one ever talks about, they're in our... They're in the Gabel report, they're in our submissions to the department, they have been calculated. I would be happy to go over them with you again and provide them to you in writing, but you need to take into account what it costs to operate the facility during that period of time, what it will cost to maintain the facility, do permit upgrades, all of the things which Covanta is agreeing to do during that extended period of time. And when you take those things into account, the cost savings, the reductions in rates, and the things that we've been advocating for, outweigh the cost of refinancing of
Mr. Patterson, I hope that the question, through that letter, was either answered or corrected, and if you feel, I feel, if the areas where you sent this letter out to the various towns, you would send a follow-up letter stating the corrections that you have learned of today.
If I may, Mr. Kennedy, I think that, you know, the dialogue portion of the hearing required by statute is closed, but I do want everyone who's here tonight to know, we're going to respond to that letter in writing, which will further memorialize what I've said here tonight. We're going to answer any questions that you may submit subsequent to tonight in writing within the next 15 days, please, so we can get this to the point where we'll close one way or the other. And we're going to certainly be speaking to the towns about the content of all the submissions. We're going to prepare the McEnroe Public Hearing Report after the 15 days has gone by, which will incorporate the transcript from tonight, it will incorporate the public notices that were published with respect to this hearing, as required by statute, it will incorporate all of the questions that were asked here tonight and the answers which were provided, and it will incorporate, in addition to what was presented during the public comment period, Mr. Patterson's letter as part of the appendix, along with our response to that. We're not going to leave any question unanswered for anyone who wants the transaction and all of the questions to receive the kind of consideration that they deserve, and that's where this is going to end up.
Thank you. Any comments from commissioners? At this time, if there's no further business, have a motion... Oh, before we adjourn, this... Joe, will you give us proof of nothing for the record? Notice was provided for this meeting. Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
I move second.
Mr. Commissioner Eastman? Commissioner Erida? Commissioner Huff?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner People? Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Alto the Commissioner Jordan? Jeremy Coolish? Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank the commissioners.